Everybody, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Today is Monday, June 9, 2025. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And may I have a motion to open the school committee?
Second.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Gudere?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Hockrath?
Yes.
And Mrs. Luthen?
Yes.
First, we'll sign for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is the Consent Agenda. Everything listed in the Consent Agenda was distributed in advance of the meeting. Does any of them have any requests for something to be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed or voted on separately? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve and accept the items listed in the Consent Agenda, including the minutes for the May 12, 2025 meeting?
My motion?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item is delegation. We do have several folks signed up to speak or ask questions, so let's do that. I would ask that you just state your name and address, and let's try to limit it to three minutes, as we normally do, so we can try to get through all of the folks that have signed up. Okay, Jennifer Delorias.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Deloria, 22 Reservoir Road, Acushnet. The members of the Acushnet Teachers Association wish to express our strong disagreement and great concerns regarding the staffing cuts made by Dr. Bailey, Acushnet Public School administrators, and the Acushnet School Committee to balance the 2025-2026 school budget. We believe that the cuts are retaliatory, violate our collective bargaining agreement, ignore past practices, and are based on professional self-preservation. The association was recently made aware of the budgetary limits imposed upon the school district by the town that could result in staffing layoffs for the next school year. Dr. Bailey had the opportunity to discuss the plan and strategy with ATA President Lisa Carvalho, and she chose not to. We were insured by Dr. Bailey that our district's leadership team was prioritizing student-facing staff in an effort to provide the best possible support for our students in the classrooms. This was, in fact, not true. The only layoffs have been student-facing staff, and all full-time employees were cut were ATA members. This includes positions that existed pre-COVID, a number of classroom teachers, specialists, interventionists, and paraprofessionals. Meanwhile, no cuts or layoffs have been made in the administration department staffing. Under Dr. Bailey's leadership as superintendent, which began in 2018, the number of positions in the district administration have doubled. Those contracts amount to $1,105,52 for the '25 fiscal year and $1,139,466 for the '26 fiscal year of the salary line item in the school budget.
Thank you. Christine Daniels.
Christine Daniels, 56 Hopbon Street, Fairhaven, Mass. I'm also speaking on behalf of the ATA. In that same timeframe mentioned just previously, student-facing positions were reduced and eliminated, including classroom teachers, Wilson reading specialists at AES, specialists at FMS, grade-level special education teachers at both schools and paraprofessionals. This affected class sizes as student enrollment fluctuated and made it impossible to provide the necessary classroom support and services for students, as should be happening in an inclusion model system. After-school transportation was cut, impacting our most at-risk and economically disadvantaged students' opportunities for academic support and participation in extracurricular activities. Mishandling health and safety issues have also greatly impacted students and staff. Ignoring mold issues in our building is now costing the district more in cleaning, infrastructure, health-related costs, and compensation for substitute teachers to cover staff affected by toxic mold. In the midst of these issues, district administration positions continue to be added and/or sustained. At this time, the salaries of just three administrators are more than that of 14 power professionals.
Shelby Hamilton.
Shelby Hamilton, Two Manor Drive, Fairhaven. This coming year's layoffs include classroom teachers, specialists including a physical education teacher at the middle school level, academic interventionists, a special education teacher, a technology teacher, and paraprofessionals. This will result in even larger class sizes, which compromise student and staff safety, fewer staff members to provide extracurricular activities and coaching, and less individualized attention for our students in every classroom setting and academic area. Again, there will be no changes to administrative personnel or salaries. Unfortunately, the administrative team's performance and workload do not currently provide the support and leadership for students and staff to justify this budgeting strategy. We believe the layoffs of our members can be avoided by reining in administrative spending and staffing for this year and the years ahead. A strong commitment should be made to prioritize student-facing positions.
Margaret Vera.
Margaret Vera, 23 Noah Street, Acushnet, Mass. We also want you to understand how these cuts will have a negative impact on each and every child who attends our schools. First, it was decided that a special educator at AES should be one of the cuts. This decision will take support away from our most at-risk students and rob them of the early intervention they desperately need. When looking at the numbers of incoming kindergarten students on specialized plans, it may look as though the numbers are lower than they actually are. This is simply because we have not met half of our students. Teachers are meeting them for the first time and have to assess their needs within the first months of school. Any educator knows that real-life need for special education in kindergarten far outweighs the number on a piece of paper. Losing this position will take support away from classroom teachers, making it difficult to meet the needs of all learners. We will also be losing our technology teacher at the elementary school. In a school where every child has their own computer, there'll be no one to teach them how to use it. This puts our students behind everyone else, especially our low-economic students who may not have access to technology at home. Without technology in schools, students will fall behind on the essential skills for the digital world in which we live. There will be no adherence to the Digital Literacy Massachusetts frameworks, which have been an essential part of the curriculum for the past 10 years. This gap in instruction will once again put more pressure on classroom teachers and take away from their ability to meet the needs of all students.
Joanne Silver.
Joanne Silver, 38 Giat Street, Acushnet. Acushnet Elementary School will also be losing a reading interventionist. Our interventionists are the first line of support for a child who is falling behind. These teachers specialize in reading instruction only. They are here to teach the students in small groups to help catch them up to their peers before their learning gap makes it necessary for them to be on an IEP. They are tasked with keeping up on the latest data-driven methods of reading instruction and delivering it in an engaging way. Our reading specialists are instrumental in supporting students and teachers. Without them, the gap in reading skills will continue to grow, and teachers will once again be expected to meet the needs of our most vulnerable students without any support. The elementary school will also be losing a nurse. It seems black and white that two schools should require two nurses. However, it is not that simple. We have many students with high medical needs. When we have a third nurse in the district, that person is able to cover when the nurse of either building is out. With the two nurses, this will cause an issue anytime one of them is out. It will cause an issue with hearing and vision screening or on a field trip. There will be either a substitute nurse who does not know the needs of our students, or there will be one nurse trying to tend to the impossible task of covering both schools. I don't know about you, but if my child needs their EpiPen inhaler or other lifesaving medication, I don't want them to have to wait for someone to come from another building. When there is no nurse, the teachers are told to only send emergencies to the office for help leaving them to tend students in their own classrooms. Once again, it takes support away from students and educators.
Rebecca Ashley.
Good evening. Rebecca Ashley, 34 Mattapoiset Road. At the elementary school, we will also be losing a first grade and fourth grade teacher. When we lose classroom teachers, it obviously affects class sizes. And more students, once again, well, more students, once again, means more work for classroom teachers and less individualized instruction for the students. This constant moving and shifting of staff is detrimental to staff morale and student learning. Unfortunately, these cuts are being made to two of the most vulnerable grades. In first grade, students are just learning to read, and in fourth grade, students are entering their final year of elementary school that is meant to prepare them for middle school. Larger class sizes and shifting of teachers from grade to grade is not the answer. Over at Ford Middle School, students will be losing one of the physical education teachers. At the middle school, gym is the only time students are able to get up and really move around. Without recess, those two times a week are the only time students have to move and play. Having only one teacher either means that the gym classes are going to have an unmanageable number of students, or classes will get cut down to once a week. In addition to his daily classes, Mr. St. Jean is also a coach, intramural coordinator, and has many responsibilities planning extracurricular activities for students. Our students need to learn in an environment that keeps them healthy and gives them access to the things that they enjoy doing. Cutting this position would be detrimental to our students.
Caitlin Newyer.
Caitlin Newyer, 5 Neuer Street. Ford Middle School will also be cutting their math interventionist. Similar to the reading interventionist, her position is essential to support students who need extra support to fully understand the curriculum. If you have had a child go through middle school, you understand how important this position is. At some point in your child's education, most parents get to a point where helping them understand common core math becomes a challenge. Without extra support at school, the gap will continue to grow for some students to the point where they are no longer able to understand concepts. Another position cut that leaves our most vulnerable students at risk and our classroom teachers spread too thin trying to teach students at vastly different rates. A paraprofessional will be cut from the middle school as well. The pairs who work at both of our buildings are such valuable members of our team. Our buildings and classrooms simply cannot function without them. They are the ones that are caring for our students and helping to support their learning in the classroom. Lastly, the middle school will be losing the position for a Spanish teacher. It was decided that we needed to offer Spanish in middle school so that our students would move on to high school prepared for their freshman year. This is just another example of how these cuts will hurt our students. In closing, we want to express how important every single student-facing teacher and paraprofessional is to the experience of your child has at school each day.
There's a few more names here, but maybe they're not here.
Can I just go? I didn't know you were talking. Jade Madonna.
Yeah, go ahead, Jade, please.
I didn't know you were lying.
Jade Madonna, 14 Randall Street. I have lived in the town of Acushnet my entire life. I was a student in the Acushnet Public Schools, and now my son Jacob is as well. Jacob is five years old and is autistic. He is almost done with kindergarten, where he has flourished in the inclusion class with a special education teacher and a paraprofessional for support. He is so excited to start first grade. As a parent of a child with special needs, sending him to school each year to a new classroom is scary. His first year of preschool, he was completely non-verbal. By his second year, he was minimally verbal. Now, at the end of kindergarten, his speech has improved dramatically, but he can still be hard to understand. If you don't spend enough time with Jacob, it's hard for new people to understand him clearly, and I have to translate for him a lot of times. So far, he has had absolutely amazing teachers in preschool and kindergarten. As we look forward to first grade with the expectation he will be in the only inclusion class they offer, we are shocked to hear the special ed teacher for kindergarten, the only inclusion class first grade teacher, and the computer teacher among others are being let go. My question to the board and Dr. Bailey is, was this done intentionally to force the town to give more money to the school? The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen have warned you the excessive spending in admin positions is going to catch up with you. Is it true that just under $1 million of COVID funds was used in part on paying high-paying admin positions? Does two schools need four IT professionals when New Bedford has 25 schools and they only have nine? Does a school whose teachers have master's degrees need to spend $93,000 and $91,000 a year on salaries for two instructional coaches? Was not taking any pay increases for the higher-paid admin staff an option? This is unacceptable for the students. These teachers have an enormous impact on all the students, and especially those who need a little more support like my son. I hope the school is going to reconsider these cuts as it could be an injustice for the students. Larger class sizes and removing student-facing personnel is not the answer. Thank you for your time.
I don't know, Kelsey, I don't know, Petiana?
I'm here, but I didn't sign up for anything. That's right.
Somebody's playing.
I know.
We also have Alyssa Olivera.
I thought it was a sign-in to the staff.
Oh, that's what I did. I signed it on it.
I thought it was a sign-in.
I just want to say it's really, really critically important that members of the community, members of the school system, take the time to come out and make sure that their voices are heard. You know, even though sometimes those messages can be pretty tough to hear, especially sitting up here, and some of the folks in the audience as well, it's still, it's very difficult to describe how impactful a moment like this can be in a town. Obviously, we have a lot of tough decisions to make in the coming years, and hearing from the community is critically important. So thank you to everybody who spoke, and I'd encourage anybody to continue to participate in future school committee meetings and other town meetings in much the same time.
I just would answer the question of, was this done on purpose so that we'd get the town to give more money? The answer is clearly no, but I will tell you, I've personally been on this committee for five years, and from year one until today, every single year, the only thing we've heard from the town frankly is cut, cut, cut. So every year, we go in and we have to fight for every dollar we get in the budget, and so I echo the sentiments of, we need the support of all of you to help us get what we think is right and just for the kids in this town. The superintendent recommended a level services budget, and this committee supported that, and the town forced our hand to basically give us $150,000, when level services would have resulted in about $750,000. So that's the position we're in. It sucks, but that's how we got here.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't going to say anything, but I'll just add another dimension to this discussion, is that it's just, we reached what we call a collision point. The town is, as far as, can only increase their budget by two and a half percent. The state aid has not kept up with inflation or reimbursement. So what we have, yet our increases, the whole town increases, health insurance costs and many other costs have gone up more than our income coming in. So it's like, you're just trying to balance your checkbook, and we've reached a, you know, reaching a collision point where there's just not enough money to sustain what we're doing at the present time. What we have to do in the future is that we have to basically continue to sharpen our pencils, look at sources of revenue and how best they can be applied. But as right now, it's like any household's checkbook, the funds are just not coming in as much as going out. And it's one of those just difficult, difficult choices that some of us, you know, in the superintendent has had to make. And it may not go away next year, and we have to just continue to deliberate, reach out, look for all ways that we can sustain our present level of certain services, in fact, against them. We still got, we still, the gorilla in the room is the MCAS testing, and they're going to make certain benchmarks, and certainly we're not going to fall back, especially in today's demands on our children as far as when they go on in life. So I just want to add, how, you know, I share all these sentiments that have been well-spoken this evening, but it's just that we just have to just bear that we're dealing with what I call a collision point, and we've been warned many years that we're going to be reaching it, and now we have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think what I would like to hear is the conversation change on the town side. How are they going to increase revenues to support our schools? Because I think this committee, in the coming years, will have a lot of work ahead of them in terms of, do we need to become a regional school system? Because with the cuts that we're talking and the way inflation goes up with all of our fixed costs, level funding a school district is not going to keep us having a quality education for our students, just not. So I would just say, perhaps we can come together with the town to come up with some ideas on how to raise revenues to support our schools. We're it, right? We're it in town. People come to the town to come to the schools. We have great staff. We have great things going on, great programming. We need the wheels on the bus to keep going, and that's what was, that was strategic for this year. We want to keep our programming going, but this was not my choice. This was certainly not your choice. We were not told until April 29th that the budget had to be between $75,000 and $150,000. That is a lot less money than what we actually need to run a school system. So I knew in the coming months, we will be working hard to possibly discuss a regional school system, et cetera. That's it. I just hope the conversation turns. We have to do something as a community. And I did put out an update to the families tonight on the budget.
One last comment from me. You know, many towns are facing challenges, but I'm just going to give you a few numbers. Fairhaven, 2.23. Dartmouth, 4.4. Marion, 6.6. Mattapoiset, 6.8. Rochester, 2.4. OR Regional, 4.7. Freetown-Lagville, 4.4. So that's the percentage budget they're getting on schools this year at Acushnet, 0.86. 0.86.
We can't survive on that every year.
We thank you for all of your comments.
We all have a question? I know the public, but we all have a question. Donnie Williams, 11 Main Street. Really, I came here today, I think a lot of folks here as well, is for clarity. Dr. Bailey mentioned that a new budget, that's right there, actually, there's an explanation came out. Obviously, the latest out of the house says a bunch of cuts, right, negatively impact all of our, you know, all the students, all of our kids, right, are negatively impacted. But then the budget explanation today actually says that maybe it won't be as negative because there's like teachers being rehired, there's some shifting, you mentioned strategy. So I'm just here for like clarity, like really what is, obviously the truth, I don't think anybody's lying here, but like, come September, what's actually going to happen? Because one side of the house says we're losing all our teachers, class sizes will double, so on and so forth, but then explanation today says it won't be that bad, maybe some teachers weren't needed as the Spanish or something like, so what really is going on? Like what's the, we have some clarity, if you will.
Chair? I wouldn't say that a Spanish teacher is not needed. I would say that we've had difficulty in the past several years hiring a certified Spanish teacher, and we've ended up with a non-certified sub in that classroom. I would just say to the public to get your information directly from our website and any communication directly from the school system, because there is a lot of rumors and inaccurate information out there. So that's, the classes are not doubling, I put it out there today, but I'm still in favor of what I originally proposed, and so is the committee, actually. I know that we put it forth, and that's where I stand.
Just want to add one thing. The discussion and the challenges that we face right now are all over the state, in most every community. We're not unique, we're not, you know, any different, and we're seeing, it's basically due to, again, revenue, lack of revenue, and, you know, and increased costs in many, many areas. So it's just that we couldn't maybe look to the Commonwealth, you know, for additional aid, because they haven't kept up as promised. I remember standing on the street corner with a big sign, "No to two and a half." This was back in, you know, standing on County Street with a big sign, because I knew that what the school systems would face. That goes back maybe to the late 1960s, okay? It's pouring rain, I had a big sign. But anyway, we got promises that the state would fill in if it turned because of the limitations of two and a half. Well, we're sitting here now, many years later, and we're still waiting for that type of remuneration to come down to make up for what the communities lost in the two and a half limitations. So I just, you know, just want to add on that, you know, the Finance Committee has, you know, made some very tough decisions. They're faced with, you know, with their recommendations, and it's not that they have taken our pleas over the years very lightly, you know, so it's basically, basically just getting back to the point I'm bringing, repetitive, but we hope that going forward, we can find some very unique and different ways of doing. We may have to, we may have to look at choices that the whole town, all the town has to make, you know, whether we become a regionalized community. We benefit, I'll tell you, we're in the very few communities in the Commonwealth that has an independent school system, okay? Most of them are regionalized with other towns. We're the only ones, I think, we're the only ones that tuition, so people have a choice whether they want to go to Fairhaven High, New Bedford High, or Old Colony. Those are the choices, you know, that we have, and people enjoy them and appreciate them, and it's to our benefit. But can we afford, afford in the future, some of these amenities that we have? Or whether we're going to have to, you know, go the way that some of the school systems have gone, looked at regionalization, and that's one aspect, but maybe there are other types of things. We've got to realize that we're the only community that has very little taxable property other than the homeowner, and so there's only limitations that we can go before we get a taxpayer's revolt, you know, and they're saying, hey, you know, the town is spending too much money. They certainly would not go for two and a half override and, you know, to raise the spending allocations. So we're stuck. So we've got to look at some odd decisions, and I enjoy this conversation very much, and so, you know, because we're going to have a lot more of them, I believe.
I know, I didn't sign on. I'm sorry.
No, you did it. I did not sign up. You did not provoke me, Mr. Haprock, anyway, at all. I have a huge amount of respect for the school committee, for the choices and the hardships that have had, that have come down from the town. I witnessed it. I've been a part of this school committee for 30 years. This is my 30th spring here. And this is the worst it has ever been as far as our relationship with the town and the school department. And at some point, something has got to give. And I think the gist of what people are saying here tonight is not so much that we had to cut, right? It's the cuts that were made. That's the problem that people. We talk about it all the time, two schools, one district, right? We're a family. I mean, I haven't stayed here for 30 years because it's a horrible place to work. It's a, it's a great spot. The community is wonderful. You know, you make these lifelong family members that become part of your world. I mean, Melissa, you know, you're a teacher. I mean, it's part of who we all are. So when we get, when this kind of stuff happens where you know the cuts are coming, you know it's going to happen, and you're, you're told that, you know, we're doing the best that we can, and then only thing that is cut is from one department. That's what we're having a difficult time with. If, you know, we're losing a technology teacher, we're losing a parent, I don't have to name them all again. You know, we got the letter today from Dr. Bailey this afternoon. That letter should have come out a month ago to let people know that this could have been. I feel like the more transparent we are with things, the better it is, right? Because then it always seems as though we're hiding something, and we're not. I know that you want to keep people and teachers in front of kids. I know Dr. Bailey does as well. She put forth a fair budget. We supported that budget, but then here we are. We've had to make the cuts, and the cuts that were made are what people are upset about. It's not the cuts, it's what the choices were. And I know it's not my purview. I'm just a first grade and second grade special education teacher. I'm not an administrator in the district. But when you talk about stakeholders, the teachers, the union is a stakeholder as well. And unfortunately, that stakeholder was never brought in to even talk about some of the things. We were all just told what was going to happen. So I just want, I don't want you to miss the gist of tonight. It is not the cuts, we understand it. We have to live within our means, within the budget. But what was cut is not, is what people are upset about. So thank you for letting me speak, even though I didn't sign up. I was not going to speak tonight. I wanted you to hear from other people, but of course, here I am.
Very happy to have you speak, for sure. Just when you approach the podium, if you could just identify yourself by name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. I'm Lisa Caballo. My address is 94 McKee Street in Dartmouth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
14 Randall Street. Kind of piggybacking off of what Mrs. Caballo just said, we, you know, I think we all understand that the state funding has definitely decreased and is only probably going to get worse. But I don't think we've heard the answer to the question as to why the admin positions making over $100,000 to $200,000 are getting raises here, something like 8%. And that was in one of the meetings for the school committee and the finance committee. What each department made, I believe it was the tech director alone, was getting 8% raise average from 22 to 26. Superintendent, I think the average was 5.6%. We haven't got an answer as to why they're still getting raises, but our budget is suffering. Thank you.
Scott Delarque, 22 Resilaw Road. I still, I think the big question, well, actually, you've got to do more with less, right? Is that fair to say? No? Yes, no? The question is, why is the administrative staff not being cut, but teachers are being cut? I still haven't heard that answer yet. That's the big question. So if you've got to do less with more, more with less, why would we not be trimming from the top? Or our frontline workers, the ones boots on the ground, so to speak, are being trimmed and being cut for our kids? Doesn't make sense to me as a taxpayer in this town. And I still haven't heard anybody answer that question yet. Thank you.
15 Davis, 16 Sycodan Street. I've been in this district, I've worked here for over 30 years. I've seen this district evolve from having a business administrator, a principal in each building, and that would be it for administration, to where we are today in terms of a, of a team of people that run our district. Many, all of the positions in our district are important, and I understand that. But as we talk about the issues with the budget and looking at regionalization, which wouldn't be any less than five years out, we look at, you know, some wing and a prayer that the state is going to bring money down, or the millionaire's tax is going to give us something to supplement what we're doing. We can't wait five years because our kids in the classroom, they're there now. These kids are in front of us now. They need support now. They need programs now. And if there is any way to avoid cutting teacher, educator, parent positions, is there any other option? That should be the first option. We should not be an administration-first district. We should be a student-first district.
Hello. My name is Courtney Rittenhouse, 42 Burke Street. I'm coming here to speak and to ask, there has to be another resolution. I moved to this town 10 years ago and bought my home for the school system. I've had kids come through the school system since 2015. I had the opportunity to volunteer coaching in the middle school this year for basketball and volleyball. And I, like with a heartfelt please, there has to be another resolution. These teachers and the nurse, they need to stay in their positions. I don't know how else you can figure it out, but it has to be figured out. We need them.
Yeah, I would just make a quick comment, if you don't mind. So I've been a Christian resident for my whole life. I've grew up here, I went to both schools here. And, you know, even going back to some of the times that I spent in the school system, particularly the elementary school, I can remember some pretty dark budgetary times. And I recognize that they can, you know, make lasting impacts on kids. I remember having, you know, back in the 80s, music for one year. And then I'd never had music again for the entire time that I was in the school system. I remember having my art classes cut. And, you know, I think that, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I know, you know, one of the things that I did when I got here today, knowing that we were probably going to be having a tough discussion with members of the town, was I spent some time kind of walking the halls and looking at the nameplates on the different doors, looking at the nameplates on the doors, both the admin side and the student-facing or teaching side. And it's, you know, I think that with the budgetary concerns that we see coming down from the state level, trickling down to the town, speaking to Mr. Haprock's point of not having really that many revenue sources coming into town in the near future, I expect that we're probably going to have some pretty tough, tough discussions as a community coming up. A lot of that is just going to be making sure that your voices are heard, not just in town, but please consider making your voices heard to your state representatives. We need to make sure that the funding that's coming down and going up to the state through your tax dollars is being spent wisely and not, you know, squandered on programs that don't directly impact the communities.
Scott Delarque, again, 22 Resilaw Road. Again, nobody has answered the question. Why do teachers and the administrative staff is standing like this? Can someone please answer that question?
I will just say that I did address it on the budget update that was put out today. So that was addressed.
Everything, anyway.
Could you read it?
Could you address it now in front of everybody?
So why are we teaching positions impacted instead of administrative roles? In FY 2026, teachers will represent 59% of Acushnet public school staff, above the state average of 53% and national average of 48%. 12% of our staff are administrators or support personnel essential for compliance, operations, and district improvement. This small team is already lean, and further reductions would impact the district's ability to function effectively. Our district does not have a full complement of administrators, requiring our administrators to function in many different roles. We wear many different hats. For example, we have no HR director, transportation director, early childhood director, grants manager. All of those roles still need to get accomplished and completed. When I first started in the district, Desi cited this district as not paying attention to things in the district, the curriculum, the teaching, the learning. And we've made drastic improvements with curriculum since I've been here. We've actually been recognized by the state and nationally, and it's been a team effort. So we're trying to preserve the programming that our students have access to. Mr. Ellis talked about not having music in his years, not having art. That would be a shame. I wouldn't want to cut any program in our schools. So I don't know what more to say because this is not the budget I presented, but we still need to keep the wheels going on the bus. And everything that we do is strategic, and we know that we want a sustainable school system for our children. And if you have class sizes one year of 18, and they're going up to 18 point something, then that was a necessary cut in our eyes, to be honest. You know, the enrollment has declined in Acushnet. You can see the figures on the sheet that I presented. And it's not because I want to cut student-facing positions. It was the least impact to the students overall. They're all of their programming, all of their needs. And we get quite a bit of impact from all of the positions that we have in this district. And that's why our district has been successful.
Students need teachers, not admins. If you have a comment, please come forward and state your name and address.
I'll say it from here. Monte Sardina, 15 Westland Street. Students need teachers, not admins. So I'm going based on what these people, they need computers, they need people in offices. They need help with the students, not offices. They're the ones that help our children and our future, not people in desks with pens and pencils making budgets. They need to be cared for, not the administrators. That's all I have.
I just had a question. How is it determined on what position to cut? Where she had just mentioned about like the position that was cut, where she, like she used your music as an example, but technology was cut. And in the world that we live in, it's all technology. And I feel like especially with their early education professionals, that's critical for our future and the foundation for their education. So I'm just wondering, how was it determined what positions to cut? Like who determined that?
I'll just say that it was a team effort from the district, and there are some rationales on the budget update that I put out tonight.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mike Boucher. I'm the chairman of the finance committee here in town. I just want to bring out the point that during our joint meeting that we had with the school department, I made some, I made several suggestions during that meeting to try and spare teachers because the last thing we wanted to do was see any teaching positions eliminated. Two of the positions that I mentioned were two teaching coaching positions, which equate to about $200,000. The other two positions that I brought up, and I asked if librarians were mandated in the schools, and the answer I got was no. So the two librarian positions would come out to approximately another 150, so that's 350 there. An IT position, because we are a little IT-heavy, would be another probably 75. So we're getting closer to 500K. The school nurse, one of the school nurses, I think I made that suggestion, but I'd be on the fence about that. I would have to revisit that. I'd rather see that kept and something else eliminated. But with what we came up with as a finance committee, there'd be no, all the teachers would have remained in place right now.
Mr. Boucher.
Well, I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished yet.
Go ahead, take your time.
I could first, you know, I foresaw this coming over the last several years. And part of the reason why this year, the finance committee, what I, I decided in the FinPom as a whole, we called in our two state reps, newly elected state reps, so we could address our concerns with them. And one of the biggest issues is the lack of local aid. We're not getting enough local aid for our schools. The Chapter 70 formula is broke and needs to be redone. You know, the state, they're spending money on, they have other priorities. We all know, we see the news. I mean, the money being spent on migrant shelters and...
Mr. Boucher, let's stick to the topic here. Let's not...
I am, but it ties in, Ron, it ties in because it affects our local aid.
This isn't the forum for you, considering your personal political...
It's not, it's not my forum.
And you're also somebody who didn't understand why a teacher would need professional development in that same conversation.
It ties in, Ron.
Stick to the topic.
No, I, look, you have a problem with me, that's fine. You want to air it out right here, that's fine.
I have a problem when you use a public forum to spew your personal political...
Ron, did you hear, did you hear what I said? It ties into how local aid is affected.
When are you going to tie it in? How much time do you need?
I just did. That's all, that's all I have to say.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa Olivera, 31 Mendel Road, Acushnet. I don't have a speech prepared, so I'm sorry if I'm talking out of feelings. But we moved back into Acushnet. I came here for seventh and eighth grade as a student in Ford Middle, and then I came back with my husband and my child from New Bedford because we wanted a better education for my child. And so far, I have a student in middle school now and a student in elementary school. So far, the teachers are amazing, and the only complaints I have are staff shortages, which cutting my staff is not going to solve, and lack of communication and lack of accountability from admin. Last school year, I filed a report against the school with the Department of Education of the State of Massachusetts, and it came down to the fact that admin were not communicating. That was the main problem. And the state found the superintendent negligent, that they were, they were going against my child's IEP because they weren't supporting it correctly because of lack of staff and lack of communication and lack of accountability. So it all comes down to all of these problems, and this is only going to make it 10 times worse. That's all. Thank you.
The state has never told me to be negligent. Thank you.
And just a point of order for anybody in the audience who wants to participate, just bear in mind that if you do share any personal stories with regards to yourself, your children, everything in the meeting is public record. And if you don't want it out in the open, you might want to just, you know, have a sidebar. That's all.
Lisa Orlando, 14 Brookside Drive in Acushnet. So as a fourth grader that I have right now going into the middle school, I look at what's being cut, and it just concerns me because my daughter does need specialized. So we're talking about reading interventionists, you're talking about math, paraprofessionals, things that, special educators, things that she's going to require. It takes a village to get my daughter to get through point A to point B. And these teachers have been wonderful. I have nothing to complain about, but this here is very disheartening. I don't care about Fahaven, I don't care about Dartmouth, I don't care about, it's Acushnet. I moved to Acushnet from New Bedford for the school because it's a better school. So to see all this, it's just frustrating as a parent. So I wasn't going to speak, but I felt compelled. All these beautiful people, like just, it's emotional to me because I feel like this is just a piece of paper with numbers, and my daughter is not a number.
Margaret Vieira, 23 North Street, Acushnet. I have a question now that I... I have a question now that I know that someone from the finance committee is here. When we spoke in a meeting, we were talking about the amount of money that was allocated to Old Colony, and we were, you know, one of the things they said, well, that's the agreement we have with them. And I want to know when Acushnet Elementary School and Ford Middle School are going to have an agreement, when are we going to have an amount that you understand it's going to go up every year and you plan for it? And like, we have to pay these high schools a certain amount of money, and you know that. When are you going to know that you have to pay the elementary school and the Ford Middle School an amount of money for us to be sustained as well?
Again, just for clarity, I know there's a lot of emotions, right? I'm a parent as well, right? I want teachers for my kids, right? Absolutely right. But for clarity here, the numbers that we put out today, how many teachers are we actually losing? Because I think even that's kind of being lost, because I know that we're listing out a bunch of positions, but then the explanation today, is it two, or is it ten, or is it eight? Like, for clarity, it's important, right? We have a conversation about like budget cuts and the impact on our kids. So, like, what actually is the number? Do we have an answer to that?
So, there were ten positions reduced, three positions added, net change seven, minus seven. Of the individuals impacted by positions reduced, reorganized, eight of the ten individuals have been or will be offered a job to stay in the district in roles which align with their active certification and licenses.
So, are they just being pushed into, because all these positions that are being reduced, reorganized, are they just being, so they're still employed, but they're just being shoved somewhere else?
Not shoved, but they're licensed to teach that.
They're being rehired in a different role.
Yeah, and they're licensed to teach.
So, how many are we losing? Do we have a number? Or could lose?
Depending on who accepts your offer. It depends, right?
Is it, so eight were offered out of the ten?
Eight will happen or will be.
And whether they choose to accept it, they choose to accept it.
So, we're at least losing two, at least, because two were never offered a job back. And then now the other eight, they now either have different duties, extra duties, added duties.
Well, because there's no vacancies for those two.
Hi. Sudal Gatto, thirty-nine Bayway Drive. I'm also the vice chair of the finance committee, and I just wanted to address your question about Old Colony. So, the Old Colony is a little bit different. Five-member towns, Acushnet is one of them. And so, whatever is voted on by the different towns, and I think it's three towns vote, the rest are binding, right? We're stuck with it. Our members, so we pay based on number of students. We have always been, since I've been part of Acushnet, and I've been on the finance committee for fifteen years and was the rep, the finance committee rep for Old Colony for the first like seven or eight, we've always been the majority of the school, right? We've always ranged in the thirty to thirty-three percent range. So, that's why, that's what they mean by we're stuck, right? We're stuck to that percentage. We have a contract we're bound to pay by our students. And please correct me if you guys know anything different. As far as like, when are we going to have a contract to pay for the Acushnet schools?
We understand that, like, it's going to go up, just like everything.
Right. Everything goes up, right? We have inflation, and we have costs that we can't control, right? Health insurance was a huge one, right? And the town picks up all of the health, the health insurance cost for the whole town, including the schools, hits the town side of the budget, okay? Sixty percent.
Sixty percent.
What the town pays is what I meant by that. Not that we pay for everything, but all the towns, all the town employees hit the school, hit the town side of the budget. That's a cost that has been uncontrollable for a number of years. We're trying to do our best, but we just can't control it, right? But I don't think anybody would appreciate it if we don't have health insurance, right? We have to do things like that. Utility.
We tried to actually, from the teachers' union during negotiations, the school department as well as the union tried to do something where if people bowed out of it, there was like, we could pay money, you would then pay us, right? To not be part of the, and there was no, nobody wanted to talk about that. So, there have been ways that we have tried to bring back some money. The other thing too is that we get $4,000 less a year per student, right? Because the average is $4,000, yes. Ours is $14,000. If you look at the surrounding area towns and what we, what the towns are allotting their kids, you know, you're getting all this, people are saying different numbers. But even if we did, you know, fourteen thousand, I was like thinking about this the other day. So, we're four thousand under the state average, right? For a thousand students, that's four million dollars. That really should, we should be doing for our kids, and we're not even asking for that.
Understood. And nobody's disagreeing with that, but it's a matter of what the town can afford.
I got you.
It is all about what the town can afford.
I understand.
Okay? And that's the struggle. And I've been on finance committee for a number of years. I've had a number of disagreements. My kids ran through these schools, right? And they, and my kids had a great time. My daughter's now at Fayetteville, okay? You guys set her up for success, and I appreciate that if there's no tomorrow. But at the end of the day, we are limited to the amount of funds that we have, and that's our requirement. And I understand what you're saying, thousand percent, only fourteen thousand per student, yes. But we are limited to what we can collect from the town. And I understand that, you know, board of selectmen needs to, you know, figure out how to raise revenue. We don't have a Route Six. We are not Fayetteville, we are not Dartmouth. We do not have a Route Six. How are we going to increase commercial space? We don't have a main line directly to a highway, okay? That's what I see. That, not hearing this from anybody else, but that's what I see as a problem, right? How do we grow revenue?
The problem is, there's a rise with autism children. And sad enough, we have an autism child. And there's a lot of parents here that have autism children, and there's a big rise, and we're going to need these extra people to help to get them into the world.
No doubt about it.
We're giving raises to the administration.
And we don't have it.
Yep. I'm just simply telling you from the finance side of things.
No, I know.
I'm simply telling you from the finance side of things where we stand, because it's autism.
Have to get it out.
No, I hear you. So, anyways, I was just trying to answer your question.
We understand how it works. Like I said, we're just disappointed in the cuts, but we also need to like work together here. There's, I mean, you're watching it now, right? Between Mr. Boucher and Mr. Hood, like, we need to do what's best for kids in our, in this town, because that's what brings people here, are the schools. So, when we can't even agree to like, be able to sit at the same table together to rationalize on why we need these funds, we are losing, we're failing our kids. You're not failing us, right? You're failing our kids at this point because we're not doing what's best for them.
Mrs. Cabral, I would like to add one comment to what you just said. So, I wasn't going to share this, but I think it's appropriate. So, you know, back, the last five years, I think every year going into budget season, you know, the towns had a joint meeting between finance committee, school committee, board of selectmen. This year, we were informed by the board of selectmen that they refused to have a joint meeting. There was cuts being talked about. We thought it would be important if we're going to have to have cuts to bring all three sides together so we could have a real conversation about what those cuts needed to look like. I was basically told by the chairman of the board of selectmen at the time that there was no need to have a meeting because there's too much animosity between all three sides. I said, well, why don't we put the animosity aside and have a real conversation? I don't think the animosity is going to get any better if we don't have a conversation. It was refused. They then tried to have a meeting of the finance committee and the board of selectmen, and the school committee was told that we could not be present at that meeting. So, when we talk about animosity and being real, like, let's get real. We wanted to come to the table and have a conversation to try to work this out, and there was refusal.
Ron, that is not true, and you know it. It's a hundred percent true. It's not true. So, was Mr. Hinckley not at the joint meeting that we had?
Mr. Hinckley was. Was the full board of selectmen there?
The full board of selectmen was not there because they could not be there for other reasons.
We couldn't find another day.
Not because they refused it.
It was only one day available.
No, we haven't, we, we had a joint meeting. Mr. Hinckley was there, and he provided his input. It was no other reasons. So, you want to try and throw us under the bus?
I don't know. You were at the meeting.
Yeah, no kidding, I was.
Right. So, the point is, if it was, there were going to be cuts, don't you think that the school budget, which takes up sixty percent of the town budget, is worthy of all three sides coming together to have a conversation?
The town administrator, Jamie Kelly, was there. You don't think he conveyed any of that information to the board of selectmen?
It doesn't matter. And I don't know what was conveyed. The point was, we should have all gotten at the table and had a conversation.
They talked to each other. They have to.
Okay, well, we'll just take your word for it.
Wow. Don't watch, watch any of the board of selectmen meetings.
I do. That's what scares me.
That's what scares you?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay, we need to move on.
It's about you guys.
No, seriously. I am focused. You weren't on the conversation that I had with the board of selectmen when they refused the meeting, and then you get up here and act like you know what's going on.
Because Mr. Hinckley was there, okay? He was there, but don't act like there was nobody from the board of selectmen that was at that meeting.
I didn't say, Mr. Hinckley was there. The full board was there.
No, you didn't say that. You said the board of selectmen decided not to be there.
They had, they refused the full meeting. Next. Thank you.
Last comment. Jane Madonna, fourteen Randall Street. So, what, I forgot his name, but I watched that meeting with the joint committee between those, school committee and the finance committee, and again, the plan he kind of put forward made sense. So, why didn't the school committee or superintendent or anybody look into that plan? Why are we not going that route and we're cutting the student-facing positions instead?
I'm just going to address to my good friend, the chair of the finance committee who I worked with for many years. This issue can be resolved in three minutes. It's all, Mr. Boucher has to do is call his finance committee together and increase on the floor the budget and have two-thirds vote to take the money out of stabilization, which is our savings money, which we have for a rainy day money, four million dollars sitting there. So, if you just want a quick fix, Mr. Boucher, that's the quick, rather than, you know, a blame game and all that stuff, we don't need, we don't need this. We've got a very tough decision, and I think some wise recommendations, even on your committee's part and this committee's part, and for me. But to stop playing a blame game, you're sitting on four million dollars for a rainy day. Takes two-thirds from the vote of the town meeting members to apply that to the budget. Am I correct?
Mr., so...
No, I wouldn't recommend it, but I'm...
Sudal Gatto, finance committee, thirty-nine Bayway Drive. And so, Mr. Hawcroft, you're absolutely right. It's the decision of the residents to decide if we want to take money out of stabilization. But I would appreciate it if you continue that line of thinking. What happens next? You take it out of stabilization this year?
You and I totally agree. She's got my, totally agree.
So, if we take it out of stabilization this year, we, to balance the budget, we're going to have the same issue the following year.
Correct.
We're going to have to take it out of stabilization to balance the budget.
Correct.
And in the third year, we will have to take it out of stabilization. We start that vicious cycle. And if that's what the residents of this town want to do, it's their decision, okay? But I just want full disclosure on what happens. If we do it this year, we continue that ripple effect, okay? Until eventually stabilization is gone, okay? And let's also remember, stabilization is also where we get our bond rating. The state recommends that we have a certain percentage sitting in stabilization for that emergency fund, and our bond rating, and therefore the cost that it costs the town to pay for that, is dependent on how much we have in stabilization. Right now, we have a good bond rating. If we start to deplete stabilization, our bond rating will start to deteriorate, and it'll be more expensive for the town to borrow money, okay? So, if that's what the residents want to decide, then the residents want to decide. I just want them to have full picture of everything, okay? Once we start, it's a ripple effect. We will have to continue to do that, okay? And eventually, we will run out of money in stabilization, okay? And then what happens from that point? When we don't have enough money, we don't have money in stabilization, then what happens? Okay? I had somebody, not in the school committee now, but used to, who said, well, the state will take us, the state will rescue us. They will bail us out, okay? I don't want to rely on that, okay? Because if the state is going to bail us out, you better well believe they're going to put restrictions on us, okay? So, Mr. Hawcroft, you made a suggestion. I want full picture.
I, I, I'll put it this way. I don't recommend that suggestion, but if we're getting into...
But we've talked about it. We need to start thinking not just currently.
A positive dialogue by which we can solve future problems and have maximum amount of impact on what our decisions.
But I think we need to start thinking.
For the quality of education.
I think we need to start thinking.
But what I don't appreciate, it's a blame game.
I don't agree.
Somebody didn't talk to somebody, and somebody didn't do the, this is all political rhetoric, okay?
I'm running out of time. Do I get executed because I'm... Time is off. Okay.
So, that, that's my point.
A thousand percent, I think we're in agreement there. I just want to make sure, like, I don't think we can think about this in a short-term solution. I don't think it's a one-year fix. We need to start thinking about the impact down the road.
I said that, I said that twenty minutes ago.
So, that is it. That's all I wanted to, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
The fix is there if it's so...
Well, I just want, again, because you brought this suggestion, the fix is there if finance committee will just make the, on town floor to increase the budget. I want everybody to understand what that means. I think we need to complete our thoughts and go from point A to point Z and not stop halfway through. That's all. I want everybody to understand what that means.
We want to have the guy who's chair of the finance committee who helped create a strong stabilization.
We were on finance committee for a number of years together.
And I was one, so, so I, anything you say.
It's up to the residents. It's not in my control, it's not in everybody's control.
There's some type of blame game where we've got to all sit together in a coming year and resolve this issue once and for all. And if we don't, we're just going to, we're just going to have a school system that's going to go back to the, to the old days, which really did, which did, which was a great disservice to every citizen in this town. Want to go back to those days? I could tell you about those old days. I could tell you about those old days.
Mr. Ellis, go ahead.
So, I think it's, this is a situation when it's, I think, justifiable to be upset, to feel your blood rise. And to John's point, you know, it's very easy to maybe not share the blame as much as we all really should, as committee members, as town residents. Nobody's really blameless in this situation. Now, with all due respect to the finance committee and to Mr. Hawcroft, the town residents here tonight, if a knee-jerk reaction happens at town meeting, which we only have but a few days until, to our finance committee's point, it could have significant ripple effects that go down for years and years and years and years. They're very difficult to come back from. I think that what we all need to do as a town and as an administration is try and find that common ground. We need to figure out when we all leave this room tonight and we take that first step into tomorrow, are we all rowing in the same direction? What can we do to help each other, both from a town side, finance committee side, school committee side? And I think that probably, I mean, looking at this from the outside, until very recently, I mean, myself and Ebony just got elected a few weeks ago. I, I, yeah, I know. Yeah, thanks. I think that probably the most critical piece, and it's actually come up a few times during the conversation this evening, is communication and setting up clear checkpoints between the town, finance committee, the school committee, and every, all of the stakeholders that are involved. That way, we can get ahead of things well beyond, or well ahead of the point when it turns into a crisis. Now, is there never going to be a crisis again? Of course not. We're going to have budgetary crises probably next year and the year after and every year into the foreseeable future. Do we want it to be as dramatic as a crisis as we see today? Certainly not. Certainly not. But I think that what we need to do is figure out a way that we can work together, and it's not going to be an immediate process, but it's what we have to do to do right by the kids, do right by the town, and do right by the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Hood, I have the mic.
You sure do.
Thank you. Mike Boucher, finance committee chair. Mr. Hopcroft, I have a lot of respect for you, and I do agree with you on one point. It is not about me and Ron, and I think Ron will agree with that, too. And we should not be going back and forth the way we are tonight, because what we're trying to solve is budgetary problems, right? That are facing the entire town. The school has had to make cuts. Other departments in this town have also had to make cuts. This has been the most challenging year that I've ever seen. I've been on this committee for 19 years. I've been chair for the last four or five, and this has not been easy. So, we're, and like Mr. Ellis just said, you can't have like a knee-jerk reaction. So, the finance committee will not be making a recommendation to take money out of stabilization on the town floor.
I think it would.
And the other thing we won't be doing is asking the residents for a proposition two and a half override to fund the operational budget. There's no way we're going to do that to our taxpayers. They're burdened way, way too much already. And then the other thing is, and it's been talked about in the past, is utilizing free cash. Free cash is not going to be utilized to fund the operational budget, because that's going to create a structural deficit going into the following year. And that free cash is reserved for typically capital expenditures, one-time expenses. Something happens to one of our buildings, something happens to a water main, and we need to access our funds. We can't, we can't just, you know, think right now. We have to think about the entire town and the, you know, the future as well. You know, I'm sure we're all hoping that next year is going to be better economically and fiscally, myself included. And we do have to start thinking outside the box a little bit more as far as, you know, do we have the ability to generate any more revenue streams in this town? So, we're all working on that, and it's not easy. But right now, the only thing we can control is what we spend and how we make cuts. And we made, the finance committee made, we thought, the most logical suggestion to make cuts without sacrificing the teachers, and I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
I hope I taught you well.
With all respect to you, Hopcroft.
I'm going to be the closer. Kathleen Simmons, I'm the representative for the teachers' union, but also the students in this community. So, anything that happens to the educators and the students, I am your girl from Massachusetts Teachers Association. I would like, because you're recording this, on FinCon people to tell the parents and the residents how that stabilization fund grows every year. It's not money that just sits there. It grows every year, so they can answer that question. If you were to take some out of the stabilization fund, there would be some coming back into it. It doesn't get depleted. I've worked in towns all over the state with many stakeholders, school committees, parents are major stakeholders, superintendents, attorneys, to find ways to work together to fill budget gaps in this very unstable financial times. Now, while I agree that cuts are necessary at times to rein in the budget, the, I'm going to reiterate what all the educators and parents said, the types of cuts that were made to forward-facing teachers are not what I see when I worked with all these districts across the state. What I see is tiers of cuts, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and the tier 4 is always the last resort of forward-facing educators. You go through supplies, subscriptions, you look administration to see if it's top-heavy. You make hard choices, but teachers are the last ones to go, and I'll tell you why. Because your children is your town's future. If you don't educate them, and if you don't listen to your parents, you have not done your job. That means select FinCon school committee superintendent. It is your job to educate these children with quality educates. These are those people sitting in the audience. Those are the people you chose to cut, 10 of them. Now, where they land in this reorganization, we do not know. We have been asking the superintendent for information, so we know if people are going to have jobs, people will have a roof over their head, people who have children that need to come to school. So, when you lose your job after many years, you have financial instability immediately. So, I'm going to ask you as representative of the children and the educators to work together. And yes, there's going to be a worse year next year, but guess what? You still have to fund your children's education. So, work together and figure it out, because next year, you can't cut 10 more teachers, because then the following year, you can't cut 10 more teachers, because then you don't have a school for your children. So, you have to decide, you committees, all of you have to work together and decide whether the children of this town are your valuable resources. It is your responsibility as stewards to educate them with music, with art, with gym, whatever, Spanish, tech. To have no tech teacher in an elementary school in the world of technology we're living in, they take the MCAS test on Chromebooks. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? I am ashamed to hear that you don't want to fund your children. These parents are telling you they need these educators for very specific needs. These children who have challenges need to be fully supported. It is your job, all of you, to fund the schools to support these children. That's the only job you have. You can fight over dollars, but you're fighting over kids' lives when you're fighting over dollars. Don't put dollars before children's needs.
Hi, I'm Emily Sardina, and I'm a 7th grader, and I live on 15 Westland Street. And all I want to say is that, like, the people that are in the classrooms, like the
students and the teachers, are the only ones who matter and not the people behind desks.
Solution's not a problem. Where do we go from here? Right, we know we don't want to do the cuts. I get it. We know that we'd rather the cuts come from admin as opposed to teachers. The issue is a lot of the admin under contract, so even if every other room will all say we want cuts there, a lot of those cuts cannot physically happen. So, that's not going to happen. That's not a solution. We just got mention of maybe civilization fund, ripple effect from that. Is that actually a viable solution? Like, can we leave here tonight with some kind of guidance, direction, or a solution? If, I know may not be the right forum, because that's FinCom stuff, but there was mention of ripple effect multiple years. Are we allowed to pull money out of that fund just for this year to keep their jobs?
Yes.
Because a lot of the communication aspect we're hearing, I know Dr. Bailey mentioned that she was told April of, it sounds like it was just last month that she was told, hey, by the way, you're not getting all the money requested. It sounds like there's communication issues between all three boards, right? That was two months ago. It sounds like due to numerous things, we're now jammed into, hey, town meetings in two days or three days, there's a budget shortfall, and the kids and the teachers have to pay for that. Like, so is there an actual viable solution here to maybe just fund for one year, give them their jobs, fund the kids, and then everybody in-house can kind of fix all the communication issues, right? And then actually have a viable long-term solution? Because now, now you're on notice, right? Now, the town knows, the teachers know, right? I'm guilty of it, one of the parents wasn't really tracking a lot of the stuff. We're all aware now. So, can we fund that, one year out, actually come to a long-term solution, and then fix it in the future? Is that an option? Is that a solution, or?
Quite frankly, I don't know.
Can anybody on the board tonight offer us some kind of solution, you know, guidance? Because that's what we're here for. And I mentioned that before, clarity. Like, I'm here as a, as a parent for clarity and guidance, not just to, you know, I know the issues at hand. I, I know. We've heard the issues at hand. I get it.
I'll answer your question.
You're good.
The school committee has made a recommendation for the budget. That's a column that's on the town warrant, the budget, school committee's recommendation. The finance committee has made a recommendation. The town votes on the finance committee's recommendation, up or down. There's nothing, the final vote comes from the town meeting members. We have an open town meeting, and they can do exactly what they want with their money, okay? That's simple. But both bodies have come with an identical recommendation. Correct me if I'm, and it's up to the town members to vote, to vote for that budget, you know, with that number, or do what they want with it.
So, for clarity, right, again, a preface here. If we vote at town meeting for that budget, the number you're talking about, that will get our teachers funded and our kids taken care of?
No, no.
Or is that the decrease number?
No, no.
That's a decrease number, to be clear.
The budget's already been submitted, it's in print, and everything else.
So, clarity, if the solution's not a problem here, is there any viable option that we have?
It's up to the town meeting. We can wash our hands, both the finance committee and the, and the, and the school department, you know, the school. Those are the recommendations to be acted on by the town meeting. My...
Just looking for options. Either she can correct me. Should I keep it super, super simple, right? Like, I'm a educator, trying to get a super simple answer on what can I do on Wednesday to get them paid and get them...
I will tell you that a town official at town hall told me that in a couple of years, Acushnet will not be a viable town if it continues to go like this. And again, I'm not on the finance committee, but I see Sue is up next, so she's probably going to talk about why it's not a good idea to keep going to the town year after, year after year. When we made the proposed cuts, we were told to plan for three to five years of level funding, and as I said earlier tonight, that will devastate this school committee, this school community. It will devastate our schools. So, the cuts tonight were, the cuts that we're talking about tonight were strategic in the sense that will have the least impact on the kids based on enrollment. I'm not saying I, I put forth a budget of 4.5% increase. Ron Hood read all of the other communities and all the percentages increase that they're doing around us. I know of no other town in the state that has level funding budgets. So, I'm just asking, I'm hoping that we can turn the conversation around to start talking about how we can, and I'd love for you to be on a committee, because you seem like you want to solve a problem, how this town can get some revenue for, to support our schools. In the meantime, the school committee probably needs to have some subcommittees going to figure out regionalizing possibly, right? Because I know in three to five years, if we're level-funded, it's going to be a major problem. I'm already in my head thinking about next year, and to say that there's no admin support cuts, there was one last year, but we have to cross-train people, we still have to run a district, the school bus still has to work, we can't cut the wheel off. We were cited before by Desi. We do offer quality education for the children of this town. The way the cuts were made were made on the least impact to our students this year. I am telling you, if we continue with this level funding, it's going to be a problem.
So, again, not to be dog with a bone here, but on a town meeting, is there any viable option left on the table for the residents?
I would say, I would...
We can do to get them funded? Or is this a signed, done deal, sorry for your cuts?
You want my opinion? No, there's no viable option right now. We basically have to go ahead and work, get this, this budget has minimum impact. The first thing, when Dr. Bailey presented the budget to the, to the, to the school committee, the first question I asked was, does this negatively impact the quality of education for our kids? That was, remember the first question? And the answer was no.
Are you kidding me?
Okay, I'll tell you right now. Holly Professional, and she, and that was her call. Under state law, the way budgets are presented, and we have a very strong superintendent and a weaker school committee. We can't sit, you know, we, we shouldn't be running around second-guessing a superintendent's judgment. That's, that's, that's the role of the superintendent. And to her professional judgment, the quality of education will remain, and then we move from there. Am I correct?
As best we can. I'm not saying it's going to be perfect. There are, there are losses. There's a Spanish teacher, gone. Math interventionist, gone, both from the middle school. Teachers in front of kids, we're cut and we're reorganizing. I'm not saying, I didn't want this budget, but this is what, I'm trying to be fiscally responsible to the town.
But you, your statement to me was basically, would not have a drastic, negative impact on our quality of education that we're all on.
Yes.
Also, it was mentioned before that it was a team that came up with the numbers, came with decision.
Yes.
Is that, was that team just in the school system, or is that team actually include the school committee? Like, who's on the team? I know I can't get names, I get it, we don't want, like...
Right, with the administrators, the principals, but ultimately, the school committee's responsibility is the budget.
Was the school committee involved in that?
Yes, we had meetings.
So, school committee, so school committee and administration all left to decide these spots we're going to go?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't, do I have to say my name and address?
I'd like to know it.
We all know you would now, Sue.
Yeah, 39 Fairway Drive, Su Donado Vice Chair Finance Committee. I actually got up here because I wanted to answer your question.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Were you asked, can be solved if by just taking money out of stabilization, come together and come up with a solution for next year so we don't have it? I sit here honestly, and I just don't see how we can find a solution next year, right? You're going to be talking about more increases, more in everything, right? Fixed costs are going to increase, contractual obligations. This is not a one-year fix, in all honesty. I don't see how that is possible, okay? It's a huge number that we need to figure out, okay? We did come on the town side as well, right? We're trying to figure things out. But I just wanted to answer your question. We can take from stabilization, but we will take next year, and we will take the year after that until we figure it out. Because the path to increased revenue is a long-term goal, not a short-term goal, okay? And, and yes, I heard all the stats about the percentage increases and everything. Again, full disclosure, I don't know the answer on, but I'd like to know what the historical numbers were for all the towns. But I also think we need to adjust, because this is something that I always talk about, we need to adjust for any of the significant decreases in revenue to really come up with a percentage increase, right? There was one year where our high school costs went down $500,000, right? You need to adjust for those things. Actually, two years within the last four years that I can think of, where there was like significant drops, right? You need to account for those, in my opinion, right? If we're truly to get into a number where we compare apples to apples, right? I'm an accountant, right? That's just my nature. I want it apples to apples. And so, I'd love to know what those numbers are. I don't know what it is. But again, adjust it for those significant drops that we have had in the town as well. So, that's it. Did I answer your questions?
Thank you very much.
Margaret B.R.I., 23 Noel Street. I want to maybe explain a little bit what reorganization means to parents, and reorganization means that a PTS teacher is now taking a position from a non-PTS teacher, and someone is still losing their job. So, maybe the faces that you've seen on Facebook, those people will still be back next year, but that's because they are pushing somebody else out of their position. So, reorganization is a nice way of saying someone else is going to lose their job. So, it, it still is teachers lost.
Kelly Prolic, 999. I'm just really curious about if you, Dr. Bailey, if you are thinking about the budget a year or the more ahead of time, how is it that the school committee could renegotiate contracts and give raises to admin positions, knowing that it would affect forward-facing or student-facing teachers? I, I also moved to this town for the schools. I didn't know much about this area, except I knew that Acushnet had good schools. I have three children currently in the schools, and I don't like to see this fear of what's going to happen to actual teachers. I come from a long line of teachers. I was a teacher. How is it that administration can get raises, knowing that teachers will be cut?
Can I, let me address that question as you can go. So, I do, I'll address the question in terms of renegotiation, and I'll talk specifically about the superintendent's contract, because that's been a hot topic. If you look at the contract, the contract had language in it that indicated that by June 30th of this year, 2025, the school committee had to inform the superintendent whether or not we were going to bring her back after next year, which is the last year of the contract. And so, we did renegotiate a contract with the superintendent, because if you're going to bring her back, or tell her you're going to bring her back, you need to try to get a deal done, otherwise you're basically giving the leverage to one side. And so, that's the reason that that contract was done, with the timing that it was done. If we waited until the end of the contract and tried to renegotiate a contract, and either side didn't want the other side, or we couldn't work out an agreement, that would be very responsible to leave the district without a superintendent. So, I get it. I get why people ask, why would you do it now? But essentially, that's the reason.
Why would they raise?
Why the raises?
I want to know. Why would she get the budget?
We, when we looked at compensation, we benchmarked the job against many, many other districts in addition, and by the way...
Where the high schools?
Let me finish my answer, and if you have a question or a comment, come up to the podium and ask it. and ask it. We also consulted, the school, and by the way, just for full disclosure, there's two members here, Mrs. McBlom and Mr. Ellis, who were not on the committee when that contract was, was negotiated. But we benchmarked the job against many other jobs, including talking with legal counsel who's involved in negotiations of many superintendent contracts, to validate that what we were looking at wasn't, you know, out of what the norm is for these types of roles. So, so that's the rationale. I understand some folks may disagree with that decision, but that's the rationale.
So, I'm an IT guy, so my question is, do we have five IT people that work in these schools? Both schools? Were any cut over teachers?
Can I, can I address? My name is President, this is actually going to be part of my presentation later. We have two technicians in here. We have one data coordinator who's not a technician, we have a director myself. We do not outsource. I came here about three years ago, and we outsourced approximately, some years, $50,000 to $70,000 on top of the two technicians that were already in this district. So no, we do not have four people, we're very bare bones here. On top of that, we also utilize our E rate. E rate is federal funding. So since I've been here, we've brought in over $130,000 just for E rate. So to give you an idea of what we do not have, we do not have network admin, that's me, we do not have database admin, that's me, we do not have a tech coordinator, that's me, we do not have instructional tech specialists, that's all of us. So this team is bare bones, and I'm sorry, I get to hear all you guys, and I'm a little emotional about it, because my team is very cheap, number one, they don't make a lot of money, they're not unionized, and they do all this work to support our students and our staff. And I've already seen it from everyone saying, we have five, six, seven, eight, nine, look at the numbers. I heard West Bridgewater, we have, they said there's two techs. Look at the numbers, there's a network admin, database admin, they outsource over $100,000 annually, and they have tech specialists. Come on. So I'm sorry being emotional, but that's what we have, we have two techs here, two, for 1,000 kids, 1,000 families, 200 staff, and we do it every day. It's a 365-day-a-year job. It's not one of you. Thank you. Sorry.
So, who made the decision to keep the tech people and the librarians over the teachers? That's my question.
Hi, Alyssa Olivera, again, 31 Mendel Road. When you negotiated the contracts for the superintendent, did you consider the P R S complaints like mine? Because I'm sure there were others.
We considered what?
The P R S complaints, the file that I reported against the school with the Department of Education. Did you consider any of those when you negotiated the contract with the superintendent?
So I'm not aware of the complaints that you're, that you're referring to.
Okay, so the complaints that I'm referring to are, basically, if, if you think, I don't know if it's just this, but if you think that the school is negligent with your, your child's I E P, you can file a report on the Department of Education, and they investigate and look into it. I believe there's, like, an index, I just, I was just trying to look for it, I couldn't find it, to see if there's like a number in Akushanit. But I believe there should be a way where you can look up P R S complaints, and you'd be able to see, maybe not details of the student, but you'd be able to see some details. And so you'd be able to see that, that the state found the school negligent, and it came down to lack of communication between admin, and you negotiated a contract and gave someone a raise who I complained about, and the state found negligent. That doesn't make sense. Why would you give someone a raise, basically rewarding them for being negligent?
Yeah, like I said, I'm not aware of the state finding the superintendent negligent.
You have emails. I have emails, we're copying them.
I question which kind of discussion, whether it's germane to the, the main issue that everybody's here for.
It is, because it's, it's about lack of communication with admin, that's what it came down to.
It doesn't have anything to do with, with budget, you know, with budgets and a budget crunch or challenges.
So basically, the, the short-term solution that everyone here is talking about is that there should be cuts somewhere other than forward-facing staff, forward-facing teachers, and it should come from some other department. So why are we giving raises to people who have been found negligent from the state?
Okay.
The Department of Education found admin negligent, and you're giving them raises.
I think that we should be sitting here.
If you're not aware of this, maybe you should start being aware.
We're talking about the valuation next of every teacher in our system, and that is all confidential information, and should not be.
The P R S complaint isn't specific against the superintendent, it's, it's against the school. What the, what the state found was, was that it was a lack of communication between admin.
You've got to respect the rights of teachers.
What about the students? What about my child? I don't care what public information, I have two children with I E Ps, and literally the only complaints I've had about the district is lack of communication with admin. That's the complaints I've had. And lack of staff, and now you're cutting more staff. That's not going to solve the solutions, I mean, the problems that I'm having with my children on their, with their I E Ps. You're, you're just making it worse. You're giving people raises who I've literally complained about and have been found negligent, you're giving them raises, and yet, cutting staff who are, who are needed. The staff that my child needs. That's all.
Doesn't look like we have any further comments, so we appreciate the feedback. Like, like I think we've said many times, these are really, really difficult decisions for everybody to think, nobody wants to make these decisions. I don't have a lot of words, it, it, again, it sucks, no one wants to be in this position, and we certainly feel for all of you, so thank you for your comments. So we're going to move, we're going to move on the agenda. Dr. Bailey, I don't see any old business, so we'll move into new business.
I know that there was a big meeting, I'm not sure if you want to postpone this for another time, based on the time, if you want to hear it. A lot of the other things on my agenda are more standard procedural things that are quick, so I think we have to board.
All right, let's postpone.
Okay. All right. So the next thing I wanted to talk about was high school tuition agreements. As you know, we've been approached by Freetown Lakeville to get in on our high school tuition agreements, and we did offer them to come and present in the summertime, but that makes four school systems now that want to have some type of a partnership with our school district. So I guess I'm asking the board is, what is your purview? Do you want to do it all in one evening? Do you want to divide those systems into two? Do you want to have a special school committee meeting just for this? I do think it's important information for, for the high schools to see what all high schools have to offer our students. So I'm asking the boards for planning purposes, what is your purview in terms of the logistics of having four school districts present during a, a public meeting?
How long do we anticipate they're going to?
I would say, I would say 20 to 30 minutes. And knowing that we tell them 20 and it's 40, right?
Now, the point is, we have agreements with two of the, those four, correct?
Those agreements expire next year.
Now, are we opening up tuitions for four?
No, we, we are mandated.
Why would we want a presentation?
Because we are mandated by law to have at least one agreement. We're looking at this as a creative way to save money for the school district. We don't want to pay what we're paying for the school tuitions, to be honest with you. It's outrageous, and a little competition never hurt anyone, and parents have expressed that they are interested in some other school districts, and school districts have also approached the school committee. I still think we're going to need a, a relationship and a partnership with Fairhaven, obviously, but I, we want to give them all, you know, before we make those high school agreements, and we won't be doing a 20-year agreement either, because those were hard to open up, and, you know, there were things in there that were just not appropriate after 20 years, right? So, we're trying to do things that, again, strategic, looking towards the future, but we do have four school systems, New Bedford, Fairhaven, O R R, and Freetown Lakeville, that all want to come. And I think it's great for our kids, to be honest with you, that they have choices, you know?
Parents, I, I'm not, I just want to get some clarification.
Yes.
By my question.
Sure.
I think it's exciting, and I think it's a, a step in a direction that is going to have many more steps.
So I guess I'm looking for some feedback on the logistics of a meeting like that. Do you want it to be during the August meeting, and that's the only thing? Do you want it to be a separate meeting? Do you want it to be all high schools on the same evening? Do you want us, yes, okay. On the same evening, yes.
It's a long night.
Yeah?
A long night in August.
Do we want it to be in August?
I, I think so.
Right, because we have a year to figure this out for the new agreements. That's all I needed to know on that one, so thank you so much. The next one, we have a school physician contract for the next school year in your packet, and we just need a vote on that, but it's Dr. Trevetti, it's nothing different, just a formality of updating the contract.
So, you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make it, motion.
I'll second.
So the motion is to approve the school physician contract for the 25, 26 school year? And I think we have it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say non-motion passes.
Okay, the next one, school committee meeting dates for next year. We can certainly do a vote or not, but it, it's in your packet, just for planning purposes, if everyone's okay with it. If you want to take a vote, that's fine, you don't have to, but that's what we would be putting out, public facing, as soon as you are all in agreement with it.
Can I have a motion to approve the 25, 26 school committee meeting dates?
Uh, so motion.
Second.
Any questions? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say non-motion passes.
Okay. The next one is the energy savings performance contract. It's a three-year contract, and I'm looking for authorization. We're requesting a vote to authorize entering into a three-year energy management services contract with Train under Mass General Law, Chapter 25A. The vote serves as a form of insurance in case the long-term 20-year energy performance contract is not approved at town meeting. So why this three-year contract is important. Immediate needs addressed, and this, I'll move back to the air quality, of course, that we've been talking about. Immediate needs addressed. At a minimum, this three-year agreement allows us to move forward with critical improvements to freezer and refrigeration infrastructure at both the elementary and middle schools. These upgrades are necessary and time-sensitive to preserve food safety, use energy waste, and modernize outdated systems. Also, food services fund compliance. The freezer refrigeration project is aligned with financial best practices. It allows us to responsibly spend down the food services revolving fund, which has grown beyond the allowable threshold, not to exceed a balance equal to three months of average operating expenses. So while also spending these funds on critical infrastructure that supports food service operations. Also, it's a coordinated effort. The project was identified and developed with strong input from the food services director, who helped coordinate the assessment of needs and solutions in partnership with Train. And it's a strategic safeguard, approving this three-year contract does not commit the town to the full 20-year project. Instead, it offers a short-term path to address urgent needs while we continue to pursue the broader clean energy and facilities modernization project. So again, I'm looking for a vote from the committee to approve, enter into a three-year energy management services contract with Train under Mass General Law 25A.
I saw move.
There's a motion to approve the three-year energy savings performance contract. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, that's all I have tonight.
I think we have the technology update.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, school committee members. I'll be more composed. So first, we have end-of-year procedures, we're currently collecting all the thousand Chromebooks that are out there now. Each device will be thoroughly inspected, serviced, and prepared for deployment in 25, 26. Looking ahead, same thing we did last year, we have insurance that we've shopped around for, it's $34 per device. We highly encourage this, it saves our, our families a lot of money. We do kind of everything in-house, our techs will take the device, ship it out, have it repaired and replaced, and hand it right back to the student. So we, this stuff is going to be, we're going to send out emails in August to remind our parents to sign up, and it'll be on our website as well, so you'll see further communication. Beyond device collection, tech department's doing our summer tech plan, which is system updates, we recycle our devices, we do inventory, infrastructure maintenance, updating, you name it, and I won't get into all the boring, boring stuff for you. But additionally, we're also in the final stage of completing all required state reporting, and actively preparing our systems for a smooth start of the new school year. That's where our data coordinator does a lot. And I just want to take a second and thank the entire team, they've done a fantastic job. I also want to sincerely thank everyone for a great school year on behalf of the tech department. We wish all students, staff, and families a safe, restful, and a joyful summer. Any questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
Business manager update?
Swan song.
Chief President, School Committee, thank you for giving me the time tonight. There's a lot that I want to say, and I was thinking this over the entire time, and I said, hey, I'm not going to say anything, but everyone that knows me knows I like to stick my foot in my mouth occasionally, so, there I go, right? Before I get into my memo, you know, what was displayed here tonight was actually exciting, right? It's the most passion I've seen here in my 30 years at a school committee meeting, a select board meeting, a finance committee meeting, or a town meeting, you know, if you've heard of me, I've watched them all. I don't know how, it became some sort of a family hobby, and we tune in to see what's being talked about around the town, even though I've been here, you know, not even three years. Keep it up, right? Keep it up. Town residents, you know, teachers, admin, school committee, keep it up. Let's keep the conversations going. You know, publicly, it was discussed, again, in, in the short time here, there were mistakes made on this side in the budget, right? We, we found them, we corrected them. We made handshake deals on the high, high school tuition agreements, that if we over, if we're overfunded on the budget, we will return those funds to the town, because it likely means a student transferred from one of our tuition high schools to an old colony, or to an out-of-district school, which then the town pays on behalf. We heard about the town, you know, not having a, a significant amount of money invested in an interest-bearing account. All of a sudden, they found that, they placed it in the interest-bearing account, we had an influx in revenue. Let's keep challenging each other, because you cut admin, you cut town accountants, you cut treasurers, you cut police chiefs, who knows? Mistakes will be made, and it will cost even more money, similar to that interest not being invested properly, right? So that's one of many examples. You know, I hope I made mistakes so that the next business manager can, can find those and, and, you know, bail someone out, save a job. I don't know, but we need to push forward, we need to find a solution, we need to find a sustainable solution. You know, this is going to be a terrible analogy, and I'm not great with words, but right, you know, residents are almost, you know, member, members of the town, right? A membership is your taxes that you pay. If you go to a gym and have a gym membership, and they add an exorbitant amount of, you know, amenities to that gym, your membership is going to rise. If you want to sustain the amenities that are offered in town, you might, it might cost you an extra penny, it might cost you trash pickup, it might cost you an increase in taxes. But let's face it, we have trying budget times, right? We have failing infrastructure, not just in the schools, but across the town. Something's got to pay for it. Why do we close $1.5 million out to free cash every year? Let's challenge, let's, let's ask these questions. Is it because of vacancies? Is it because of strategic budgeting? Is it because of conservative revenue projections, that if we're more dialed in, we'd be able to put those into our budget? You know, we're going to get a list of things that are being purchased with free cash at town hall, let's challenge them. Do we need them? Are they a necessity? What does our stabilization need to be? If it's for a rainy day, what is today considered? It's boring, in my neck of the woods, you know? Let's tap into that. Sure, it's not sustainable, but when you're closing out so much free cash every year, that money can then be allocated to reimburse your stabilization. We're not here to talk about best practices right now, we're, we're talking about sustaining a talent, sustaining a school department. That's good. I got it on my system. FY '25 budget, we're on budget, we've been fiscally responsible, we have savings. We're going to have a budget subcommittee, subcommittee meeting, hopefully prior to June 30th, to discuss. We're going to have a budget subcommittee meeting, hopefully prior to June thirtieth, to discuss those savings. They really come from savings in salaries due to vacancies and staffing shortages, substitute pay, heating fuel, and utilities. Some of the heating fuel savings, again, were strategic and paying for those out of Esser before those funds expired and, you know, potentially have the Fed recruit them. So there are savings through it, we're going to discuss that. We want to refund our special ed stabilization reserve for times like these that, you know, we need to tap into our own stabilization to potentially fund a budget or an unprojected cost. We have out-of-district costs, you know, unpredicted at all times. We have some moving in, we have some kids coming up, we have some unknowns, as some of the teachers shared earlier, about kindergartners coming into our school district that we haven't been properly able to assess. So it's critical that we fund that reserve in case there's a placement that we need that we can reasonably project. There was enough said about the FY twenty-six budget again, so we'll leave that there. As far as the high school tuitions agreement, I just want to go back to that agenda item. Not only is it critical for us to decide on that sooner than later, to see where our future is and get the feedback that's necessary from, you know, the community as well as the students, the school committee, you know, the admin, the relationships that exist. Those towns are also banking on our revenue from their revenue from our tuitions to plan for their budget. So most budget processes happen late summer, early fall, that they're going to want to know as well how much money that they can anticipate or they're going to be in a situation like us where they're cutting teachers left and right. And guess what? It could end up being our students when we make it to high school, so just want to be respectful of that. The energy savings performance contract, again, the idea is a twenty-year contract that allows us to explore all these different options that we've spent on that project and that audit. We know we have food service needs that have been identified, that just the other day, we had a freezer not keeping temperature. We had to take all the food out and put it in the other one. We can't use that freezer for the rest of the year. So we need to fix these things. We're able to do that in-house with the food service fund. It will not impact the taxpayers' dollars, it will only help the school system and it will help us align with compliance. When universal free meals came into play, our meal participation increased, our reimbursement for federal and state reimbursement on meals increased, so we have a lump sum there that we're able to use for food service needs and this would be a no-brainer for that. So I just want to provide a little more clarity there. Facilities, you know, again, another department arguing that we have a short crew, we have two day custodians, we have night custodians contracted out. We've continued to try to hire for those positions during the year. We're lucky to find substitutes, but we're going to keep pushing. But I want to thank them for the year that they've done and kept our schools clean and in order. They respond to a lot of tickets. You know, they go out of their way for overtime and helping out teachers and classrooms and set up for these types of meetings, so thank you to them. You know, school's getting out, but it's actually probably their busy season where they get to work on some critical projects within the classrooms that are usually full. So they have a summer plan ahead of them that, you know, is going to be just as busy. Food service, so last meeting, I communicated that we were going to report on the school committee, excuse me, report to the school committee on the food service department goals and what goals we met. That report is essentially ready. We deferred to a separate school committee meeting, knowing the agenda tonight and the timing. And in my eyes, it's a good chance for the food service director to sort of work with the new business manager that will be turning over in July to explain the goals and how they met them and how they want to continue to push forward together. So there's a little bit of strategy there as well. Transportation, we don't have a transportation director, so it's critical that you guys give us all the information you can on your transportation registration. We don't want to wait until September to tell you your stops and your routes, but we don't have that information if you don't tell us where you live, where your students are going to get picked up and dropped off. So please, those surveys have gone out. Mrs. Grace up here has really spearheaded the transportation department and we need to get that information so we can get it over to our bus company so that they can start training their drivers and then we don't have to worry about, my stop was skipped, my bus was late, the kids weren't delivered on time. So please, please, please read those surveys. If you have questions, reach out and answer them all so far and we're not going to hesitate to continue to do that. You know, if it takes coming into our office to walk you through the survey and get the information, by all means, our doors are open. Other matters, you know, just throwing this in there. Trying to plan for the end of the year, our fiscal twenty-four audit fieldwork is about to take place next week. My past life, I was a public accountant for six years where we did nonprofit audits of charter schools, day schools, daycares, et cetera. This is significantly late and this impacts the financial statements and the numbers that were given and the accuracy of the numbers that were given and the integrity of the numbers that are given. These audits were due December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Single audit, our federal funds were due March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. This is at the hands of the town. We go with the speed of them on these audits. Some of this funding could freeze up if we don't meet compliance, if we don't meet audit deadlines. Let's ask the questions, why? Why is it taking this long? Why this month? And what's the holdup? Thank you.
I just want to thank Patrick publicly, this is his last school committee meeting. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that not everybody sees, but he's worked hard on these building-based budgets with the principals, with our department heads, and it's really come together and we have a great system. And I know that the transition between you and the new business manager will be seamless. But thank you again. I've worked in education for, gosh, thirty-two years, thirty-two years, and you are one of the best business managers I've ever worked with, so thank you.
I just want to say, Patrick, we thank you for, I guess, three years of work. We were very lucky to find you and we will miss you and we wish you the best in your next adventure. We appreciate you, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I got to go back up there, don't I? Would you want to take this one?
What is it? You want to do that? Just, it's fine, it's, you know. Yeah, it's your last meeting.
All right, so next agenda item, per school committee policy is declaring surplus items. Oftentimes, when we get to this exercise, it's because the items are obsolete or, you know, essentially worthless. So attached, you have three documents summarizing some of these items with codes that represent their condition. Many of these items on the facility side are items that are in the trailers outside that we actually rent. We want to get those trailers empty and we want to get those trailers off of our campus and stop paying for them. We don't have a ton of storage here, but we also don't have a ton of need for what's in those trailers, so, you know, that serves that purpose. We also have some critical items that's just expired, outdated, old, never going to be really renewed. So we are trying to surplus that as well. In the past, you know, we'll make these items available to town department members, again, as policy states, but in the past, we've also kind of had our own little yard sale over the summer where the items are offered at a dollar. Whatever items don't get purchased, you know, first come, first served, we end up throwing in the dumpster, so I think there's plans on that as well. So if anybody's looking for worn-out desks, chairs, I don't know, books, you know, look out this summer for those being available for a dollar on campus if it can be declared surplus by the school committees.
Can I have a motion to declare the listed items as surplus and allow the business manager to determine the most advantageous method of disposal for school committing policy, the end school property disposal procedure?
Some motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same non-motion passes. There was some, I think, additional communication and information in the packets. District newsletter, AES, FMS newsletters, AES, Iron High Quality and Clean Energy Project, personnel report, communication to families, FMS, teacher accepted to DESI Grade Eight Civics Panel, great, and Essa Federal Grant for Reminiscence Report from DESI.
Which the last two, I will say, are very positive, if you look through them.
So at this point, I think we will adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation? If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public, the chairman declares with no reason to return, then we send these open people on violation complaint.
Some motion.
Second.
You do a roll call?
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Breda?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And Miss Breda?
Yes.